Special meeting of the Board of Alderman is called to order on Wednesday. I mean, I'm sorry, Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Clea will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
I am here on Zoom. I'm recovering from a stomach surgery at my home. There's no one else here in the room but my children and wife are somewhere in the house, but they're watching on, I think, the city website.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Tevo.
Here.
Alderman Timmons. Alderman Wilshire.
I am here.
Eleven present, four absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Tonight, we have a presentation on the wastewater rate study, and I'm going to recognize City Engineer Dan Hudson.
Madam Chair, Alderman Jettie is here, and so is City Engineer Hudson, but they're upstairs at another meeting, so I think we've got to have Mr. Boucher to do the presentation this evening.
Come forward, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. First off, Director Lisa Fodo, Public Works Director, apologizes she couldn't be here this evening. She's feeling under the weather. My name is David Boucher, the Wastewater Superintendent. I'm going to start off the sewer user fee presentation by giving a brief overview of the wastewater facility and going over some of the past and present projects. See if I can get this working.
I think you've got to aim for the desk, yeah.
Yeah, for the... That desk?
Yeah, that desk.
Did I mess it up? Yeah, there you go, all right. Okay, first of all, the wastewater facility sits off of Sawmill Road. The footprint is approximately 28 acres, seen in the picture above. Its purpose is to collect and treat wastewater and deliver clean water to the Merrimack River. We service approximately 89,000 residents in the city of Nashua. We also service the town of Hudson, a small portion of Merrimack, New Hampshire, and a small portion of Tingsborough, Massachusetts. No, here I go, I'm going to mess this up all night. Our design flow is 16 million gallons per day with a peak design flow of 110 million gallons. Right now, we're averaging about 12 million gallons a day we treat, and our total septic annual septicage is approximately 800,000 gallons. In our collection system, it's made up of over 400 miles of underground piping. We also have 13 pump stations throughout the city we maintain, nine combined sewer overflow structures in the city, and we have eight siphon chambers we also maintain. So some of the projects we have, this is out in our collection system, we have the screening and disinfection facility. That cost was approximately $15.2 million. This is a standalone facility located off of Bridge Street. It's designed to treat, screen and treat stormwater flow. It also has a sophisticated million gallon underground storage tank along with this facility. Also, we have a pump station upgrade project, upgrading all of our pump stations in the city. Over half of them are complete. Some of them are receiving packaged pump stations like the one seen in the picture here that's around Sandy Pond with new pumps, new controls. Some facilities are getting brand-new buildings which will house the pumps and emergency generators. And some of the past projects at our wastewater facility, we have had a headworks upgrade, some of these are associated costs with it. The headworks upgrade, part of it was installing mechanical bar screens, seen in the lower left-hand side of your screen. These screens pull heavy material out of the wastewater before it goes through the facility, brings it up three stories to ground level so we can dispose of it. These are essential for protecting all the equipment after it, so we're not destroying pumps. Our energy recovery upgrade that we've had recently, it's the middle picture, difficult to see, but part of it was installing two Caterpillar generators. These generators run off of methane gas produced by our primary digester complex. The unique thing about the energy recovery generators is the heat is all reclaimed. We use that to heat the sludge in our 1.3 million gallon sludge digester. The water booster building upgrade, which is seen in the lower right-hand side, previously this was all underground. We had pumps and flow meters underground. It was a poor environment. This is a brand-new building above ground, more climate control for easier access. Significance of these pumps, they maintain water pressure throughout the system, city water pressure, that we provide to all of our processes. The wet weather facility screen replacement was another recent upgrade. It was similar to the headworks project. We installed some screens just like that one on the far left. And, let's see, I think that one didn't change here. Okay. Current projects, we have vehicle storage garage. We're in the design phase. We have a lot of assets, vehicle assets. In this picture, lower left-hand side, we have two of our VAC trucks. These trucks have water tanks and water pumps on them. We can't store them outside full of water in the wintertime, they need to be indoors, and they're there for emergency purposes. These trucks are used daily to clean the collection system. We also have other trucks that have electronics on it. We have three crane trucks, and we have a camera truck that also has an onboard computer system that needs to be kept out of the elements. We have a Class A bio solids project, which is in its preliminary stage. So currently, we produce a Class B bio solid that we land apply for beneficial reuse. Because of new stringent limits coming, it's making it more difficult to find areas where we can spread this sludge. So by producing a Class A bio solids, that's further drying of the Class B solids, gives us more options as to where we can apply it. It's currently costly producing a Class B and finding a place to put it, so this is a very important project to us. Dry well valve and pipe replacement. This one is currently going into construction. This is in our main building at the wastewater plant. We have piping that's been installed for over 50 years, receives a lot of sand through these pipes, so there's a lot of erosion. They have to be replaced. So this pipe ranges in size from 36 inch to 42 inch, and it's three stories of piping that has to be replaced. Our Phase 1 upgrades, this is a combination of several projects. By bundling them, we have cost savings. This includes replacing a lot of the large gates we have through the facility, doing a lot of concrete tank repair throughout the facility, replacement of some flow meters, essential flow meters, chemical pumps. We also have stormwater improvements that are tied in with this, and our pump building, which is where all our sludge pumps are and our chemical pumps are, so there's improvements. It's a three-story building there. At this point, I'll turn it over to our operations supervisor, Noel Osborne.
Hi, Noel Osborne, Operations Supervisor. The next couple of slides is intended to show you the magnitude of the regulations that the wastewater facility is under. Listed on your screen here are all the permits that we hold on behalf of the city. We are permitted on every aspect of the facility, from the water that we discharge to the Merrimack River, to those bio solids that we beneficially reuse, those generators that Superintendent Boucher spoke of. We are regulated with the emissions that come off of it, as well as the tanks that feed them. We are an industrial site, so the rainwater that falls on the facility property and goes out the outfalls is regulated. The city has outfalls throughout the community, and those are regulated as well. Just the vast quantity is something to... Is this thing actually?
Help you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Within those permits is requirements to come up with different governing documents. They have generalized requirements that say you must create an O and M for the collection system, an operation and management document. So we, as a city, have to come up with these and create our own regulations and our own schedules that we have to follow as well. So within all of those permits, there are these governing documents, and those just further regulate the city and all of the different aspects of it, the collection system, the cleaning and the maintenance of the collection system. How long is it going to take you to televise the entire collection system? We also have the consent decree that was dating back to the early 2000s that the EPA said that you have to do all of these improvements for the combined sewer collection system. So there's just so many different aspects, and we have to be on top of all of these different regulations. The next two slides, I'm not going to read these to you necessarily, you have those all in your slideshow, but this is a letter that the city received back in 2021 from the Director of the Water Sector up at the state of New Hampshire, and it just talks about the importance of the proper rate setting and getting a good sustainable rate so that we can create a positive revenue to the city to start to fund these projects. As the regulations increase, so do the upgrades, so does the cost to the city. So at this point, I want to turn it over to Hazen and Sawyer.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Frank Gayot. I'm the Project Manager with the engineering firm of Hazen and Sawyer. My firm has worked very closely with Public Works, the Sewer Department, and Finance Department to develop a sewer rate model that can accurately predict sewer rate increases for the city into the future. With me on, joining us via Zoom today is one of our engineers in our finance group, Olivia August, who's going to present the model, how it was developed, the data that went into it, revenues, expenses, capital improvement projects. She's going to also present comparison of Nashua's rates with other New Hampshire communities, the affordability of the rate increases, as well as projected rate increases over the next three years. That's '24, '25, and '26. So with that, Olivia, you share yours.
All right. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so just as Frank said, I will be walking through our process in developing a financial model for Nashua's wastewater and the function, describing the function of this model. I'll walk through our data sources that we used, as well as the projected revenue and expenses, and walk through the 2024 through 2026 proposed wastewater rate increases. So a bit of background, we developed, we worked with Lisa, Dave, and other folks in the wastewater department to create a financial model that is used to inform equitable, fiscally responsible, and defensible rates. And this model is built using historical usage and billing data, historical financial information received through data requests such as actual expenditures, operating expenses, and then finally planned capital improvements and future loans, which Dave walked through several of the planned improvements and large capital projects for the wastewater treatment plant. So this model is, I won't be pulling up the model, but I'll be showing screenshots of our Power BI model, which is built on top of kind of Excel data inputs. So first, to walk through our data sources, we had a full year of actual billing and usage data for fiscal year 2022. We looked at the budget, we input the budget upcoming fiscal year 2024, current, and then also the actual expenditures in terms of 2022 and 2023, as well as the collected revenue during those years. We have input in the model, the updated rates, sewer rates, which were last updated in January 1st of 2022, and we have planned future wastewater treatment plant improvement projects. Dave walked through several of them that range starting as soon as this year through 2045. And we've also looked at kind of the operating capital equipment reserve fund balance as part of our recommendations today. So starting with expenses, we have here a summary of expenses from the current and then future years as well. So looking at our current year, and this would be 2023 actuals, and our projected expenses based on future capital projects, increasing operating expenses, as well as increasing current and future loans, you can see that there's a projected increase of expenses year over year that totaled to a total of 39% increase by 2026 in expenses. So all of the items that Noel and Dave spoke to today in terms of increasing permitting and regulation restrictions, the need for new capital projects, such as upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant and bio solids, all contribute to this increasing costs and expenses to wastewater program by 2026. So I have a few of those listed here. We've covered a few today, kind of the projected expenses that are planned and ongoing for capital projects needed for the wastewater program, including that Phase 1 upgrade, the dry well upgrades that were discussed, gate and valve replacements, stormwater management, et cetera. And so we took the projected expense information, we looked at current and projected revenues, and developed proposed rate increases for the next three years. So our first proposed rate increase would be this upcoming April, April 2024, and that would be a 15% increase to, as I showed, that quickly escalating projected expenses to kind of match our revenue to the kind of accelerating cost needs. And then two other proposed rate increases in January of 2025, and then the following year in January 2026. Both of those are recommended to be at 10%. And there was no 2023 rate increase, so that's kind of the bump in 2024 is to kind of cover and make sure that our next three years have the sufficient revenue. And I also wanted to make a note that although these numbers may seem high, they are equivalent to about an 8.5% increase if it had occurred all four years. So it's just kind of a different timing, makes those numbers look a little larger, but it can be equated to about an 8.5% increase per year. And so as Frank said, we wanted to compare where Nashua's current wastewater rates are to neighboring utilities, and you can see that as the letter that Noel brought up earlier, Nashua is on the lower end in terms of existing rates. So I know a number like 15% or 10% can seem really high, so we tried to contextualize it in terms of an average residential monthly bill, assuming about 5 CCF or maybe 4,000 gallons a month or per month of usage, a regular 5-inch meter size, which is pretty typical for a residential single-family home. And so currently, the average residential monthly bill would be around $30.99. With these pre-proposed increases, that would go up to about $35.64, $39 in 2025, and then 43 in 26. So when looking at your average monthly bill and how these percents would actually impact it, it's relatively small. And an important factor we looked at as well is affordability, making sure that these rates are affordable to the ratepayers, looking especially at the slow-income users as well. So we looked at the lowest quintile, which is the recommendation by the USCPA, and we made sure that even with these rate increases, that the lowest quintile income users are still well below that 2% threshold in terms of how much of their monthly income is dedicated to sewer services. So I wanted to kind of propose what these rate increases would do to our projected revenue and net revenue, so kind of that difference between our expected expenses and this revenue. So you can see with these three rate increases proposed, first in April and then the following Januaries after that, you can see that right now we're projecting a negative net revenue in 2024, 2025. There's a lot of new capital projects that are coming online, and that funding isn't there based on the current rates and revenue that's existing. However, with these rate increases, we're projecting that by 2026, we'll have sufficient revenue to cover expenses with additional, with a positive net revenue of a little over $1 million, which puts us in a much better place in terms of long-term fund balance and financial health. So I think that's all I had today, but I wanted to present these, and I will stop sharing on the screen. Thank you.
Any questions, folks?
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. Great presentation. The question that I, I had a few questions when we were looking at the graphs because I couldn't see it all that well, but it looked like where Nashua was in relation to what I call the big three.
Yeah, Olivia, can you bring up the presentation again? And that's the comparison of the rates with member communities. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please, thank you. Right now, we seem to be right, right there. That's current rate structure. Have you forecasted at all? Do you have any intelligence to get an idea in fiscal year 2026 where we'll be and where those other towns will be in relation to us?
So, projection of the rates usually is a three-year look ahead is probably going to be your best accuracy, and as you get the next year's financial data, we input that in, and also, where are the projects that were projected to be started in '24, '25, and '26? Did they slide a bit? So we'll update that. But usually, we don't like to go too far out into the future, because then the model might give you results that not as accurate as we want them to be. The idea with this rate model is to eventually get to a cost of living type increase. So really, you know, you haven't had rate increases, I think you didn't have one in 2023. I think it was flat, it was zero. So there's some catching up to do when you skip a year like that. But the idea is, if we can get it to where we're actually getting a fund balance in there and maintaining a fund balance, technically, the rule of thumb is four months of operating income and 25% of capital projects is a nice, healthy fund balance to keep in there. And as you work towards that, the idea is an increase that will be more equivalent to a cost of living increase, so it doesn't shock the ratepayers.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. Earlier, you mentioned that there were three other towns that also use our wastewater treatment plant. Do they also have the same rates that Nashua ones pay, or are they completely independent?
So, Dave, I guess they charge the same, you charge the same, yes. The answer to that is yes.
Okay.
So those member communities are paying the Nashua's rates.
And they'll see an increase.
All those communities would see a similar increase, yes.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
Alderman Dowd?
I have one concern. In my ward, there are a lot of condominium associations who set their budget January to December, and if we have a rate increase in April, for homes, it's not that big an impact, but when you multiply it times 500 units for a condominium budget, that's a big hit. And I think we'll have to address that when we finally set a new rate, but that's consideration that I'll be interested in.
Okay. What's great about the rate model itself, it's very dynamic, so you can play around with the slide bar on increasing and decreasing the rates, and when they take effect, to see an automatic impact on the fund balance. A whole lot of recalculation.
Alderman Tevo?
Thank you, Madam President. I've got two quick questions. I'll ask them both together. Thank you, guys, for all coming in, Mr. Boucher and his team, and you guys with the consultants. Appreciate that. So can we get both presentations? Are we able to at least get those in an email? Also, to go back to Alderman Sullivan's question, so Nashua right now is just slightly above Manchester. With the rates changing, we move up, but are the other towns, cities moving in the same direction as well? Will we still be that, you know, right above Manchester, or will we now be right next to Portsmouth, like in this? Because we don't, obviously up here, you don't have what they might be going to, but how will we be compared to that when the rates change for them, too?
I know we do similar type of environmental work for Manchester, and I know their projected rate increases over the next several years are in between 9 and 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know about the other communities, but that's something we can certainly follow up on.
Sure. Thank you.
Exactly. Even if the neighboring communities were to not change their rates, Nashua would still have lower rates than the existing rates for Keene and Portsmouth. So if they were to stay stable for the next three years, which is unlikely, Nashua's would still be below theirs.
Thank you, Olivia.
Miss that?
Yep, thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah, thank you. In regards to the forecasting, I mean, that's kind of what this is for. So, because I can remember a few years ago being on the board and getting a rate increase, and I think it was like, came to us in March or something like that, and a lot of the condo boards didn't know, and it was hard to do that. So I think, I appreciate this presentation because it does give the community a heads up that this is what we're looking to do. So when those boards are planning, you know, over the next couple of years, this is what they can look to, to kind of get an idea of what the city is looking to do, and I think that's a very positive thing. It's something that we actually asked for a few years ago, so I'm glad that, I'm glad to see this, and the condo associations being large in part, one of the reasons for that. The other question I have is, you have the monthly bill up there, but currently, we bill quarterly. Is there a, is there something that we're going to start billing monthly, or is that a decision by the board?
Hi, Carolyn O'Connor, Senior Manager, DPW Finance and Administration. It was just to show you the monthly bill.
Yeah.
The commercials bill monthly, residential. We have no intention of changing it from quarterly, unless it's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Clea?
Thank you. Kind of piggybacking on that, and probably for you, you say the residential's do quarterly, I understand that, and you say the businesses. Does that include condos, apartment buildings, large apartment buildings? Are they businesses or are they residential's?
They're residential.
So they would be getting the quarterly bill then?
Yes.
For theirs? Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'd like to thank you for the presentation this evening.
Thank you very much.
And everyone who was involved. Appreciate it. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion that is November 14th.
I'd like to make the motion that the November 14, 2023 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries, and we adjourned at 7:32 PM. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, November 14, 2023, at 7:35 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Richard Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
O mighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien?
Present.
Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Clea?
Here.
Alderman Moran?
You're on mute, Alderman Moran.
I'll get used to this. All right. I am at home via Zoom, attending the meeting via Zoom because I'm recovering from a stomach surgery. I wish I could be there in person, alone. No one else is here. My family is somewhere in the house, but not where I am.
Alderman Lopez?
I'm here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Here.
Alderman Como? Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Goveya?
Here.
Alderman Karen? Alderman Tebow?
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Here.
13 present, 2 absent.
And we have a quorum. Also present this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much. Well, first, of course, we held our city election last week. I want to thank everyone who came out to vote, regardless of who you voted for. I feel very honored to have been elected or re-elected as mayor of the great city of Nashua. And I want to congratulate all of our incumbents. All the incumbents who ran for reelection were re-elected. Now that the election is over, I believe that all of the citizens of Nashua, of course, the Board of Aldermen will be on this as well, but all of the citizens of Nashua can get together and work together to make Nashua an even greater city than it already is. I also wanted to give special thanks to June, Alderwoman June Karen, who is, has been, was elected to fill a temporary vacancy, but, and will be retiring from the board tonight when Tim Senate is sworn in. Ms. Karen served the city for many years as the Recreation Director. The Senior Lunch that takes place in November and has been now ongoing for 53 years is named after her because she was there at the beginning. She helped found the Senior Lunch along with then Noel Trotter. And I just want to thank her and for her many, many years of service, both as a city employee and on the Board of Aldermen. I did want to mention, Madam President, a few other things. First, you might have seen, but maybe not, that the Boyd Company recently named Nashua as one of the top 30 cities in the U.S. for a post-COVID pandemic corporate office. So they apparently surveyed cities around the country. And of the underlying methodology suggests that a lot of workers these days actually don't want to live in core, major cities, that they, that more affordable places, a little more livable, like Nashua, are where corporate headquarters is likely to go. Also, the tax climate here has quite a bit to do with it. We can forward you the, the report in the next few days. But the only two cities in the Northeast that made this list are Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and Nashua, New Hampshire. Otherwise, I think there are two in Ohio, two in Washington State, and the rest are Sunbelt. Of course, our Economic Development Director, Liz Hanam, is very aware of this and will do anything she can to follow up and try to attract, make it clear that we would welcome a corporate office of any company that wishes to locate here. I wanted to mention, Madam President, R-23171, which is the acceptance of $724,000 of federal money through what is called congressionally designated spending to pay a portion of the cost of the ramp that will make the Cotton Transfer Bridge fully handicap accessible. The 724 is largely due to the efforts, or largely entirely due to the efforts of Congresswoman Annie Custer. We had previously discussed the fact that the award was for $300,000, but some communities who received these, these grants were not able to accept them because you needed a shovel-ready project. So more money came to us as a result of the fact that our, our project was designed and ready to go. So instead of $300,000, we will be getting 724. I wanted to mention briefly, Madam President, the memo from Tim Cummings, just outlining for you the recommendation of a committee of interviewers that we had, about eight people in city government, interviewed the three applicants for the redevelopment of the NIMCO site. The, and you'll be receiving much more detail on this in the weeks ahead. There will be actual legislation, but they did complete the process and are recommending that we go with one of the, one of the three developers, and that's outlined in that memorandum. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to thank the veterans and the Veterans Committee for the parade on Saturday. A number of you were in the, in the parade. It was a great, the weather was great. A lot of people showed up, and it was just wonderful to be able to celebrate our, and recognize and thank our veterans, as we always do on Veterans Day. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Remarks to the, response to the remarks of the mayor? Anyone? Alderman Clea?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one comment. I'd like to send my appreciation also to Alderwoman Karen for having stepped up and, and served with us after the vacancy was there. We can always count on her, and she does a phenomenal job, so thank you.
Anyone else? I, too, would like to thank June Karen for her willingness to step up and fill the role of Ward Seven Aldermen. She did a great job, and she will truly be missed on this board. Recognition period?
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of October 19th and October 24th, 2023 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Wayne, our husband, P.E., Senior Traffic Engineer, regarding O-23-061, traffic changes on Woodward Avenue. Communication has been received from Sam Dervy, Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed resolution R-23-163, authorizing the granting of an easement to public service of New Hampshire, DVA EverSource Energy for tax map 43, Lot 105 and Lot 106. Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director, regarding providing an update in development recommendation of NIMCO property.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file.
By point of order, Madam President. On my desk, I do have a communication from Alex Como regarding ordinance O-2361.
We'll get there.
Huh?
We'll get there.
We're going to get there? Okay. I just didn't know if you wanted to put this. Thank you.
Thank you. So without objection, I will move to suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication has been received from Alderman Alex Como regarding ordinance O-23-061.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We've had one person sign up, Laura Tollersky.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. My name is Laura Tollersky, 5 Shakespeare Road. And for the record, I'm also State Representative for Ward Eight. Prior to being elected, I was also a selectman, and I have worked many elections. So I am here tonight to encourage the board to vote in favor of adopting the use of new electronic ballot counting devices. I hope everyone is aware that the existing AccuVote machines, which we have been using for decades, are at the end of their lifespan, with software that is outdated, repairs being needed more often, and parts that are getting more and more difficult to find. These machines are dinosaurs on the way to extinction. Now that the Secretary of State has approved two options to replace AccuVote devices, I'm pleased to know that Nashua is being proactive. What we don't want is an election day catastrophe, such as a machine failure, that could result in exhausting hand counts on our poll workers and delayed results when New Hampshire is in the national spotlight. The Special Committee on Voter Confidence recommended replacing our AccuVote machines to ensure we continue to conduct efficient and secure elections. These machines still maintain our paper ballot voting, where the paper ballots are always available for backup, and these machines cannot be connected to other devices or the internet in any way. Last year, I filed House Bill 447 relative to the purchase of election equipment, which would have provided relief to municipalities purchasing new ballot counting devices using already available Help America Vote Act funds. But unfortunately, my bill was retained in House election law, and I'm sorry to say that it won't be signed into law to provide some kind of relief for Nashua. However, I applaud the city for getting ahead on this very important issue, so that our hard-working election officials can benefit from these fast, accurate, and reliable ballot counting devices, and our elections continue to be easy, safe, and secure for voters. Thank you very much for your time.
Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from C. George Bauer, Ph.D., Chairman of Penachuck Corporation, regarding special meeting of the sole shareholder, December 15, 2023. Notice of special meeting of sole shareholder proxy statement proxy card.
There being no objection, I'll refer the communication to the Penachuck Boarder Special Committee and schedule a meeting for Monday, November 20, at 6:30 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
Communication has been received from Sam, Sam Dervy, AICP Planning Manager, regarding amendment to O-23-059.
Further discussion will be held under unfinished business ordinances.
Communication has been received from Daniel Healy, City Clerk, regarding results of the November 7, 2023 municipal election for the city of Nashua.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion to accept and place on file the record of returns from the municipal election of November 7, 2023, that the election results for the candidate's name therein be declared final and conclusive, and that the candidates, having received the largest number of votes cast from the number of positions available for their respective offices, be declared duly elected by roll call vote for them ensuring, for their ensuring term, with the exception of the race for the Board of Education, which a request has been made for a recount, and a special Board of Aldermen meeting has been scheduled for Saturday, November 18, 2023, at 9:00 AM in the City Hall Auditorium for the purpose of conducting a recount of the ballots, ballots cast for the Board of Education. And can I have this by roll call, Madam President?
You can. This is a discussion. Alderman Lopez?
As I volunteered as a campaign manager for one of the Board of Education candidates, I'm going to probably abstain.
Okay. Alderman Clea?
Madam President, I'm just, I see that we're doing the accepting of all those, but I did also see that we had a memo regarding another recount for...
We'll get to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Abstain.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 abstention.
That motion carries. So I've been made aware that a recount has been requested for Ward Two, but the legal requirements have not been met. Attorney Bolton, could you please advise the board on that?
Section 26 of the city charter provides the manner in which a disappointed candidate can request a recount. And it requires that the request be made in writing to the city clerk and to all other candidates in the race receiving more votes than that disappointed candidate. And the notice to the other candidates has to be provided in hand or left at their place of residence, and it has to be done 20, 48 hours prior to the meeting of the Board of Aldermen, where the results will be canvassed and approved. That having just occurred, it's my understanding that the prevailing candidate in that race, Colonel Alderman Dowd, received a registered letters yesterday, less than 48 hours prior to tonight's meeting. So the provisions requiring how a recount is to be requested was not met. Now, in her request for a recount, the unsuccessful candidate cites to a state statute, which is in regard to village districts, school districts, and town elections, and, in my opinion, does not apply to the city of Nashua. So that's the situation you're in.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the legal requirements to hold a recount of the ballots cast for Ward Two have not been met, and therefore, the recount is denied by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman Sullivan, oh, Brian?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Oh, yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 present.
That motion carries. I guess I skipped over something on the agenda. I will pursuant to Section 44 of the city charter, Tim Senate will now come forward to take the oath of office as the new Alderman for Ward Seven.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as the Ward Seven Alderman of the city of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Congratulations.
I think your son had something good to say to you. Welcome, Aldman Senate. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Business and Industrial Development Authority, Lydia J. Foley, reappointment, term to expire September thirteenth, 2026, to Brew Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero three zero six four. Mark Coleman, reappointment, term to expire April thirtieth, 2026, Seventy Crestwood Drive, Hollis, New Hampshire, zero three zero four nine. Downtown Improvement Committee, Fuad Mahfouz, new appointment, term to expire November second, 2026, two twenty-seven, Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero three zero six zero.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Excuse me, one minute. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October sixteenth, 2023, Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Joint meeting of the Planning and Economic Development Committee and Human Affairs Committee, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the October seventeenth, 2023, joint meeting of the Planning and Economic Development Committee and Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October eighteenth, 2023, Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October nineteenth, 2023, Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October twenty-fifth, 2023, Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November sixth, 2023, Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Airport Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Brian H. Law, seventy-eight Conker Street, Nashua, to the Airport Authority with a term to expire August thirty-first, 2028. Mr. Law, would you come forward and take your oath of office, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Board of Directors of the Nashua Airport Authority, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. I will. Congratulations. Thank you.
Board of Building and Fire Codes Appeals.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following new appointments to the Board of Building and Fire Code Appeals. Scott Cody, thirty-nine ten B Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire October thirteenth, 2026, and Carl Dubois, thirty-one Holbrook Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire September thirteenth, 2026. Neither of them are here this evening. They will be sworn in at a later date.
Citizens Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the Citizens Advisory Commission, sorry. Jennifer Bishop, three fifty-nine B Main Street, Nashua, with a term to expire November first, 2026, and Lisa Torino, eleven Berkeley Street, Nashua, with a term to expire October first, 2026. Are you, I see Ms. Bishop, could you come forward to take the oath of office, please?
Lisa's here, too.
And Lisa Torino?
Yeah.
Yeah, come forward.
You each raise your right hand. Do you each solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Citizens Advisory Commission on community grants for the city of Nashua, according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Thank you. Congratulations.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Bernadette Melton Plant, forty-one Parrish Hill Drive, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee with a term to expire April thirtieth, 2025. Is Bernadette here this evening? She will be sworn in at a later date.
Planning Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following new and reappointments to the Planning Board. Cameron Green, eighty-two A Amherst Street, Nashua, with a term to expire May thirty-first, 2024. Maggie Harper, three Taft Street, Nashua, with a term to expire March thirty-first, 2026. And Lawrence Hirsch, twelve Salmon Brook Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire March thirty-first, 2026. Those individuals that are here that I just named, could you come forward to take the oath of office?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Planning Board of the city of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Congratulations.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following alternate to member position to the zoning board of adjustment. A. John J. Mancara, thirteen Mountain Pleasant Street, Nashua, with a term to expire September eleventh, 2025. I don't see Mr. Mancara in the audience. He'll be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one sixty-three, authorizing city to grant an easement to public service of New Hampshire, DVA Eversource Energy, for tax map forty-three, lot one oh five and lot one oh six.
Aldman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R dash twenty-three dash one six three by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Aldman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have some questions on it. I did see that Director Sullivan was in the audience tonight. I was hoping that he might help answer those questions.
Aldman, I mean, Director Sullivan.
Sullivan B. Sullivan.
So I was going through the contract, and I, it was a clarification. This is an easement, and I noticed in the last paragraph, it said that they won't be responsible for real estate taxes. Does the easement mean that we're transferring ownership of the land over to Eversource?
Madam President, if I may respond to that.
Director Sullivan.
Aldman Sullivan, excellent question. It does not. There's no transfer of ownership happening in any way here. The easement simply allows Eversource to perform a couple of different activities, customary maintenance and repair of any electrical infrastructure that either exists in the easement or may exist in the future. One thing I'll point out is that Eversource does have plans to ultimately underground some of the infrastructure that's along the riverfront more globally, but this is one of those locations along what I'll refer to as the Kathy Hirsch Riverwalk, where they plan to do that more immediately. That's really the intent of this easement, but in no way does it transfer or convey any rights of ownership along to Eversource in any way.
Okay. Follow-up, please.
Follow-up.
Thanks. When, you had mentioned the work. Who do they notify when they want to do the work?
So they're required to notify the city when that work happens, and typically, that notification will go to one of a few parties. It may go to the Office of Corporation Counsel. It may come to another entity. It may come to the mayor's office. I can't recall exactly how this notification provision is written, but they do need to notify the city when work is to be done. Frankly, the base version of this easement, when it was first presented to the city, did not include that provision, nor did it include other provisions that allow us to perform customary maintenance that we want, might want to do more readily. That language was added under the guidance of the Operation of Corporation, Office of Corporation Counsel, and so that notification provision is now part of this.
Okay. One more, please.
Yes, I'll move forward.
Thank you. I also noticed in the contract that there was reference to Boston and Maine.
Yeah.
Does that refer to the former owner of the railroad tracks, and so then that is now CSX?
That is correct. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Question through you to Corporation Counsel. Since I work for Eversource, I don't do any of the stuff that's related to this, but do I need to abstain, or can I vote on this?
From your explanation, I see where you have no personal or pecuniary interest, so I would say that's not required.
Great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Aldman O'Brien.
Yes.
Aldman Sullivan.
Yes.
Aldman Clea.
Yes.
Aldman Moran.
Yes.
Aldman Lopez.
Yes.
Aldman Jettie.
Yes.
Aldman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Aldman Dowd.
Yes.
Aldman Govea.
Yes.
Aldman Senate.
Yes.
Aldman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Aldman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one sixty-three is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one sixty-five, adopting the use of new electronic ballot counting devices.
Aldman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move for final passage of R twenty-three one sixty-five by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Aldman O'Brien.
Yes.
Aldman Sullivan.
Yes.
Aldman Clea.
Yes.
Aldman Moran.
Yes.
Aldman Lopez.
Yes.
Aldman Jettie.
Yes.
Aldman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Aldman Dowd.
Yes.
Aldman Govea.
Yes.
Aldman Senate.
Yes.
Aldman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Aldman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one sixty-five is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one sixty-six, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Public Works of the city of Nashua, New Hampshire, and Local three sixty-five of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL dash CIO, from July first, 2023, through June thirtieth, 2028, in authorizing related transfers.
Aldman Dowd.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-three one sixty-six by roll call, and I'd like to briefly speak to it.
Aldman Dowd.
Yes, this is a very reasonable contract for the DPW employees and was passed unanimously at the Budget Committee, and very few changes in the wording of the contract, and the yearly increases are relatively mild and fall within our guidelines, so I recommend passage.
Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Aldman O'Brien.
Yes.
Aldman Sullivan.
Yes.
Aldman Clea.
Yes.
Aldman Moran.
Yes.
Aldman Lopez.
Yes.
Aldman Jettie.
Yes.
Aldman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Aldman Dowd.
Yes.
Aldman Govea.
Yes.
Aldman Senate.
Yes.
Aldman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Aldman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one sixty-six is declared duly Unfinished business ordinances. Aldman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to remove from the table O twenty-three dash zero five nine by roll call.
Discussion on that? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Aldman O'Brien.
Yes.
Aldman Sullivan.
Yes.
Aldman Clea.
Yes.
Aldman Moran.
Yes.
Aldman Lopez.
Yes.
Aldman Jettie.
Yes.
Aldman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Aldman Dowd.
Yes.
Aldman Govea.
Yes.
Aldman Senate.
Yes.
Aldman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Aldman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Second reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero five nine, amending the Land Use Code Notice Provisions Table and the Historic District Commission Review Procedure.
Aldman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend zero dash twenty-three dash zero five nine by replacing it with the salmon copy of the proposed amendments by roll call. Can I speak briefly?
Aldman O'Brien.
Under the advice of counsel, you'll see in the papers that were handed to you this evening, the golden rod, under the advice of legal counsel, the salmon copy will supersede the golden rod, so that we could just focus on that and enjoy it. This is a rare moment to have a salmon copy. We can get away with it, gentlemen.
Director Sullivan, would you care to make some comments on this, please?
No.
Well, maybe I partially am. No, thank you, members of the board, and I want to start by thanking you for a fairly active dialogue about this proposed legislation. It's in its original form that you considered, both at Planning and Economic Development Committee and at your most recent Board of Alderman meeting, and thank you to Alderman Jettie and others who have had some feedback on this relative to our notification procedures. I'll admit that we initiated this legislation under what we thought was a relatively benign intent, but I think for good reason. That's become a more robust conversation about the way that we notify the public about different public hearings and land use development projects that are going on across the city. And so, Manager Durfee and I, over the last few weeks, worked to make some adjustments to that legislation, and in fact, there are two versions of adjustments, one being the golden rod copy in front of you that represents three modifications primarily, that is to adjust the time, sorry, the timeframe on signage for five to ten days, to also remove modifications that we were proposing that restricted notification on rezoning applications, and lastly, just to make a few clerical modifications relative to state statutes and to further tweak it. But I want to just quickly point out some additional modifications that we're making outside of the legislation, and while they aren't directly pertinent, I think it's important, particularly in the context of your prior conversation. We're actually working directly with Community TV to post all of our land use board agendas through that outlet or media as well moving forward, and we're also going to start posting all agendas on our social media pages, which, believe it or not, are fairly well-followed and fairly well-trafficked, and if you'd like us to connect you to any of those, we're happy to do that. But I will be clear that we have not suggested re-edition of zoning board notifications nor of historic district notifications than the newspaper, and I can certainly speak to that tonight or as part of a committee meeting, but we feel confident that these other forms of outreach are more tried-and-true methods in today's world, and almost felt that The Telegraph or other media outlets or newspaper were in some ways exclusive because they required someone to purchase a newspaper or otherwise subscribe, and so that's where we've ultimately landed with the golden rod copy. The salmon copy, which we love to present this evening, actually represents one very, very small modification that Alderman Jettie actually brought to our attention. I want to thank Alderman Jettie for that. There was another section within our notification procedures that was an incorrect reference to state statute, and we've clarified that with a small addition of a paragraph three that modifies one six seventy-six, or six seventy-four reference to be six seventy-six in the New Hampshire state statute. that modifies 1676, or 624 reference to be 676 in the New Hampshire state statute. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions this evening, or certainly as part of the committee meeting, but just wanted to quickly clarify why you have two modified forms of the legislation in front of you this evening, and we welcome a referral of this back to the Planning Board and certainly to the PEDC for consideration.
Okay, I have a few questions for you. Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Director Sullivan, for listening to what we had to say and making the appropriate changes. I did want to share with you that today I heard from a resident, not a constituent, but a resident of this city, who was originally against us doing these changes. She liked the way that you had done the original one and didn't want us to rely on the 10 days of the signage and so on. She said it wasn't necessary until she spoke to her husband, who said he noticed it, she didn't notice it, he noticed it, and I said, but that's not the only avenue of notification that I knew, because I'd already spoken to you, that there were going to be other notifications, so I appreciate this, and I agree, I don't think we need to use the newspaper. They put that behind their wall, their paywall, and it forces someone to have to do it. Some people may say the same thing with CTV, because it goes to Comcast, but if we're putting it on our Facebook page, as well as our city page and so on, I think that that's important, so I truly appreciate all the changes and listening that you did. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Question to Director Sullivan. At the risk of creating a moave amendment, with regards to using public access, you can call that the Lopez Initiative maybe, is there a reason we wouldn't codify that in an amendment?
Director Sullivan.
I am glad you asked that question, Alderman Lopez, because I've written a note to explain that. We had a great deal of conversation internally about this, not just in the context of Community TV, but also around, this is not an advertisement, but for Facebook, Twitter, or X, or Instagram, or any of the other methods that we're using. Ultimately, where we landed on this is that we felt uncomfortable codifying, and this goes for Community TV too, a specific medium that we were not sure the lifespan of, and so, you know, we can't anticipate what different media outlets may exist over the coming five, or let's say, two, five, 10, 20 years, and each time we add one of those into the ordinance, it further constrains us in the future, or forces us to come back to make a modification to either strike that if it no longer becomes relevant, or to add something else in. Our preference is, and we can certainly, you know, I would hope to debate this more at the committee level, our preference is, on some of the more quickly-changing forms of media out there, we prefer to not codify those, but instead rely on sort of the statutorily required, or the very Nashua-specific pieces, such as the signage, but not necessarily put Community TV within the ordinance itself. And so I recognize we're sort of drawing some arbitrary distinctions there, but, you know, I want to tell you that we had significant internal conversation about that, and we felt that some of those methods may be more fleeting and would require further amendment in the future, and so that's what I hope is a satisfactory response, Alderman Lopez, why we didn't include those specifically within the code.
Alderman Lopez.
I mean, the answer explains the reasoning. My personal opinion is that while codifying other forms of media does mean that you might have to come back if you're too specific in codifying them, it also means that you have to use them until they go away, and community television is something the city invests in, the city maintains, I would be surprised if it leaves in the next two to five years, and I think ensuring that we do have some sort of requirements to report to the public and provide transparency is important, even if it's not specifically to the CTV, you don't have to call it the Lopez Initiative, but I do think it would be a good idea for the committee, that actually can vote on it, because I can't, to consider putting something in there that there have to be at least other forms of outreach, even if that changes. I do agree, Director Sullivan, I mean, we can't even call it Twitter anymore, I changed to X, and next it'll be the XX, so I don't think we want to necessarily identify any brands, but generally, including different forms of multimedia outreach and codifying that, I think personally I would like to see.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. My question was actually similar to Alderman Lopez's, around the public places, and if we've defined that anywhere, I was just curious about that within the new platforms as well.
Director Sullivan.
Happy to respond to that, and if need be, may I ask Corporation Counsel for some assistance with this as well, but when we refer to public places within here, we're talking about physical locations. Specifically, what we utilize is the library and City Hall for our public posting locations. We obviously use the website as well as a method for posting. There's a lot of history around this, to be quite frank, about where we've posted and how we've posted, but currently, our process is to use City Hall and the website, but we're actually talking about potentially using the library as well for all notifications moving forward, so that's what we refer to when we say public places.
Alderman Kelly.
If I could throw you to Attorney Bolton, is there any argument to include a little bit more detail around what a public place is?
It's not required by state law. The relevant statutes refer to public places, and that's always been sufficient. City Hall has traditionally been used, the library has traditionally been used, 91A, the so-called right-to-know law, specifically requires that notice of meetings be posted on the city's website, if the city has a website, which we do, and I don't think there's any good reason to be more specific than that.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Just a follow-up statement, that's fine, where I get concerned and echo some of the conversation from Director Sullivan is around platforms, and what's your reach on your platform? If you, my thinking is, someone could say, oh, I posted it on our Facebook page, that's public, but you have two followers, so when you don't have the reach in within those platforms, are we not?
Public places means a place. It does not mean the Facebook or something like that. We're required to put it on the city's website, and two public places, well, and at least one other place, a public place. We traditionally use two. I don't think City Hall or the library are going anywhere anytime soon, so I think we're probably safe for a good long time on that, and I think for the foreseeable future, we will have a website, so.
Director Sullivan, did you want to weigh in?
Just quickly on that front, a good example of where this could become problematic is in the event that in some future, the library is under significant reconstruction or construction, and that no longer becomes a viable posting location for a period of months, we would want the flexibility to then move to another public posting location. That's some of my hesitance about codifying it, but, you know, I'll say for the record, those are the two public physical locations that we've used, and then the website, of course, but those could change for some, you know, unusual circumstance in the future. We wouldn't want to have to amend the code to do that, I would say.
You're all set? Alderman Kelly. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. If you want to get the young groups in, you got to do TikTok, Alderman Sullivan, Director Sullivan. But I supported this before, and when we were in the committee, and I think we're overthinking some of the stuff, and I think it's, I'm going to support it, just like I was going to support it originally, I think we've cleared up some of the stuff I think that people had concerns with, so I appreciate that you went back and you guys tweaked it to make it more amendable to other people, so thank you, and I'll support it.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I'll support this, the salmon copy as well for the amendment. I think that the changes are good in here, and hearing the discussion about, you know, getting specific about certain websites or areas in the city to post these, I think the reasons given by Director Sullivan are good reasons to keep this the way that it is, so I'll support it as it's written on the salmon copy.
Further discussion? The motion is to amend with the salmon copy. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to refer ordinance 0-23-059 as amended to the Planning and Economic Development Committee Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing at the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 29, 2023, at 7:00 PM, in the automatic chamber, and have this by roll call.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Second reading of O-23-061, authorizing traffic changes on Woodward Avenue.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-23-061 by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2361 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-23-063, authorizing stop signs at the intersection of Charlotte Street and Buview Avenue.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-23-063 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this was reviewed by the city traffic engineer and determined to be a safety factor, and have authorized, they have approved the stop signs, and are waiting for vote tonight to make final approval.
Motion is for final passage, further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2363 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-23-171, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended federal aid project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of constructing an accessible ramp to the Cot Mill Transfer Bridge into except an appropriate $724,186 for the project.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Moran, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, November 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Second reading of R-23-172, authorizing the city to enter into a community center investment program loan agreement with the Community Development Finance Authority and borrow an amount not to exceed $1 million for repairs and renovations of the Arlington Street Community Center.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Klee, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading?
And me, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Moran. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, November 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
First reading of R-23-173, relative to the acceptance of $17,499.75 from the United States Department of Homeland Security, New Hampshire Department of Safety into emergency management grant activity, 2023 Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities BRIC Program.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee. Did I miss Alderman Moran again?
Yes.
Alderman Moran, sorry about that.
First reading of R-23-174, relative to the acceptance of $16,800 from the United States Department of Homeland Security, New Hampshire Department of Safety into fire department grant activity, 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program Ballistic Warm Zone Vess.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Govea, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-23-175, relative to the acceptance of $142,000 from the United States Department of Homeland Security, New Hampshire Department of Safety to fire department grant activity, 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program Quick Response Utility Vehicles.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Moran, Alderman Govea, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-23-176, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Public Library Board of Trustees and Nashua Public Library Employees, AFT-FPE Local Number 4831, from July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2026, and authorizing a related transfer.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Klee, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Govea, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-23-177, authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at 7 Andarosa Avenue.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Planning Board. New business ordinances?
None.
Period for general public comment. No one has signed up. Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to first start off and thank Alderman June Karen for all that she has done stepping forward and filling the vacancy when we had it. And I don't think that we have seen the last of Alderman Karen. Somebody is dedicated to her. I think we'll find something for her that she will be still part of our family. But I personally would like to take a note to thank her for her community service and particularly her community dedication. Second, with that, I would like to welcome Alderman Senate. Welcome to the horseshoe. I think you'll enjoy it. There's some great people there to work with, and I'm glad you're able to join us. So, welcome.
Aldman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo the comments of my colleague and welcome Alderman Senate to the horseshoe, and also congratulate all of my colleagues who won reelection in last Tuesday's election. I did want to comment. I hesitated on my vote that we took earlier about the recount. Before I got here, I came from another board meeting where the president of that board said that he didn't want any members of that board to regret their vote because that was the first time that they had seen it. I wish that I had seen the memo here. I wish I had known a little bit more about what was going on. I hesitated. I think, you know, it's on me. It's on the record now. But I think that I wish that I had more information before that vote, and that's all I really want to say. Thanks.
Aldman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank all the voters that came out on Tuesday. It was really nice seeing as many people as we had, and I know that I was unopposed. But I do want to congratulate all of my colleagues that have been reelected and new board members that will be coming on, such as Alderman Senate, who is here with us. I also want to make a comment that that Tuesday wasn't quite as pleasant for me because every year, every election, I have this one person who comes and bullies me. He has spat upon me. He has called me some very disgusting names, and he does it time after time even if I'm not on the ballot, but just happen to be there. For those that came to my aid, those that were standing beside me as well as constituents who went and got the police, I really am grateful that they took the time to do that. For those that were on the other side, laughing, conjolly, egging him on, shame on you. And pardon my bluntness here, but there is a special place in hell for people like that. So, thank you, Madam President.
Aldman Lopez.
I would like to congratulate Paige Bushman for winning our, I think I got that right, maybe, for winning our state representative spot. I'm glad we finally have a full slate representing Ward 4 in the State House. I would also like to thank our ward election team, particularly outgoing Clerk Barry Carden, our moderator, who's always stepped up and showed up in every way that he can, Fred Davis, and our selectman, who is stepping up in a new way, Arthur Crafty, as well as all of the poll workers who work tirelessly all day registering new voters, making sure people have their information so they could vote their ballots and everything. I really want to thank all of the volunteers who came out, too, all the people who showed a passion for getting involved in Ward 4, including the other candidates. I know it's not easy to put yourself out there and to step forward for a role, and then especially not to get it. And I know that the two gentlemen who ran for state rep particularly, they had both tried multiple times. So, I appreciate the effort and I appreciate the willingness to be involved. I hope they're able to find ways that they can serve their community. I also wanted to thank Joanne's Kitchen for donating food for the veterans over at Delaney's House through Operation During Welcomes Holiday Programs. I know Caribbean Breeze is going to be coming up, so if anybody wants to sponsor a meal for veterans, head over to Caribbean Breeze. You can buy a ticket that will basically pay for a meal for veterans on Thanksgiving. And then we're doing it again on Christmas over at Soul Sisters, which has recently opened up at 35 Temple Street. So, there's a lot of really good things going on. The holidays are coming. I'm looking forward to them. And I want to congratulate everyone who ran in their election for the work that they put in and everyone who won for their willingness to serve. Thank you.
Aldman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you. I, too, want to congratulate everybody who got reelected and elected. And I want to thank the people who voted for me in Ward 5 and all of the poll workers, especially those in Ward 5, for volunteering their time and putting in a long day at the polls. On a sad note, I want to mention, I just found out today that Attorney Anne Howarth, who was the wife of former city attorney Philip Howarth and Nashville District Court Judge Howarth, died yesterday or today, and her funeral will be Friday, I believe. And Anne was a graduate of Boston College Law School, as I was. And so, I just wanted to make mention of her passing. Thank you.
Can I skip back to Alderman Moran? Thank you. Aldman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I, too, would like to thank Alderman Karen for stepping up and taking the appointment for an open seat and serving out the remainder of that term. And I welcome Alderman Senate to the board as well. And congratulations to all my colleagues who won reelection and to the mayor who won reelection as well. Clearly, we're doing something right, and the voters want us to continue to doing that. I guess I'll find out in two years if they agree with what I'm doing, but we'll find out then. I'm glad I didn't have to sit in this particular race. Other than that, also, special recognition to President Wiltshire, who took the majority of the vote citywide of any candidate, and to Alderman Jettie, who took the most ward votes of any Alderman that ran. Congratulations to you, too.
Thank you. Aldman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I'll start by saying, I just want to say thank you to Alderman Karen for everything that she's done. Her and I have served on the Board of Alderman for a long time, and I can remember, actually, I was in your seat, Madam President, acting as president that evening when she was first elected after getting sworn in here, similar to how Alderman Senate got elected and took that seat. So, it was, you know, came up, the charter actually came up after I had realized. I didn't realize that she wasn't going to fill out the entire term until after the election. And a funny thing happened on Election Day. I ran into Alderman Karen, and we were talking, and I said to her, you know, I said, you know the reason why we appointed you back on the board was solely for the purpose of the fact that we want you on the inauguration committee again, which you had vowed off when you were finally done your last term. And she said, "Don't you dare put that seed in Alderman Wiltshire's brain of putting me on there."
Too late.
Well, but come to find out, we figured it out, June. You don't have to be on the inauguration committee. We'll have Tim fill in for you. But in all seriousness, there was nobody that was more dedicated to serving Ward 7 in the city of Nashua throughout her entire career, even when she was working in the Parks Department, and then she continued her service, and then even came back to serve again when that vacancy opened up. So, my sincere thank you to her and her family. My other thing I want to mention is I wanted to say congratulations to everyone who won. And I also wanted to thank everybody who didn't win for running what was, I think, relatively clean election. So, you know, there was a few things here and there, but for the most part, we stuck to the issues, and that was a good thing. So, congratulations to everybody, and I look forward to working with everyone in the future. Thanks.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I also wanted to say thank you to Alderman Karen for her work on the board. I remember pulling her name and getting to sit next to her my very first term, and I learned quite a bit from her. I was delighted when she came back and joined us for a bit. So, she will be missed. Welcome, Alderman Senate. And congratulations to everybody who won. I also wanted to make a point of, you know, not just winning, but just putting yourself out there is a huge step. So, thank you to everybody who ran for office. I think that was all I had. Oh, I wanted to mention downtown. I love downtown. Thursday's one of my favorite nights of the year. They do Ladies Night, and they have it open late. All the shops you can go through. A lot of them have refreshments and things, and it's a great way to shop locally and get your holiday shopping going.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank June for all her service. And she does a lot in the city. I'm on the Lions Club with her, and she does a lot for Back to School Event and just is involved in many, many things. And I do want to wish Tim Senate the best of sitting in on the new seat, and I believe that Alderman Karen enjoys that as well because she did not want to be coming to any more of these meetings. I'll also tell you that she called me and made me the official replacement for her for the candy for the Alderman.
We'll give you feedback.
Yeah. And the senior lunch that we had was outstanding, and some of us were there helping pass out the gifts. And the seniors thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed that day and have a great time and a good meal, and it was a lot of fun. So, the other thing is, I was sorry I missed the veterans parade. I really missed them, and I was sick, and I didn't want to get anybody else sick, so I decided to stay home. But certainly appreciate the fact that we have great, great veterans parades and celebrate all our veterans. So, thank you.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I first would like to thank the voters of Ward 1 for entrusting me in their seat for another two years. I think my wife will be happy that I am here and not at home. So, that's always a positive. I want to thank Alderwoman Karen for her time here in the chamber. She was a great person to have next to you. And to my new colleague, she used to bring me treats every now and again. I'm more than happy to have them. On a more serious note, November 2 was the 136th Annual Celebration of the YMCA at the Performing Arts Center. It was a fantastic event I got to attend. And to my brother and his fiance, who get married on Friday, congratulations to them both. We look forward to celebrating.
Alderman Senate.
I won't overstay my welcome. I just, first off, thank you to everybody for the warm welcome. I know very unusual circumstances. I also just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Alderman Karen for stepping back up to the plate when the vacancy in Ward 7 arose. For those of you who maybe don't spend much time in Ward 7, Alderman Karen ushered us through a very difficult period these last couple of months with events that were taking place down there. And we really appreciated her leadership, and I recognize that I have some very big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I would be remiss if I didn't thank June Karen, Alderman Karen, for being such a good neighbor. This is my third neighbor in two years, so I'm wondering if something's going on with me. But, you know, she was great to have here with experience and being able to help me through some of the things that would come up in the chamber. So, I really appreciated everything she has done for the city and to help myself and everybody here through it. And also, congratulations to Alderman Senate and Alderman-to-be Chris Thibodeau. I hope we don't get confused, Alderman O'Brien with Tebow Thibodeau, Tebow Thibodeau, because I've been called Thibodeau before, so we'll try to get that straight. But congratulations also to the mayor. You know, I think someone said it, Alderman Moran. You know, our wards think we're doing something right, and our city thinks we're doing something right to continue us for another couple of years. So, that means we have to do what they want. We have to do something for them for the next two years, and that's continue to make this city great. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate all the poll workers. That's a tough job. People don't step up to do that. So, the ones that do, I appreciate it. The Ward 8, they did a great job keeping everything running smooth. And despite what some people may say out there, they do a great job making sure all the ballots go through smooth, all the numbers match up, and that the voting goes on without any complications and any illegalities happen at the polls. So, thank you to all of them, and I hope to see more people step up and do that role. It's so important to have selectmen and ward clerks and ballot inspectors and moderators. So, thank you, and that's it.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I, too, would like to thank June Karen for everything that she does. And I will see her again because we always bump into each other for our community things. So, thank you, June, for stepping up and doing everything that you did. I also would like to thank our city clerk for doing all the things that he did. He made it possible. So, thank you for doing that. Also, thank you for reelection for our mayor. To me, it was an excellent choice. I mean, I went to sleep very happy. So, thank you, Mayor Doncas. And for all my colleagues, I was very happy with the outcome, and I get to serve with all you guys again. So, thank you, and welcome back, and see you in 2024. Oh, one other thing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Alderman Dowd, you looking for a second bite at the apple?
Not really. I just want to make sure that either you or Mr. Healy have an opportunity to talk about the recount for the Board of Ed. I know he's looking for people to help out, so I just didn't know if he wanted to say anything.
Well, let me have my comments, and then I'll call on you. I would like to thank June Karen. June has been a friend for a long time. She's a tremendously wonderful person. We couldn't have had a better fill-in for the Ward 7 slot. So, and congratulations to you, Alderman Senate, for running and winning that race. And also to Mr. Thibodeau for winning his race. All of you have done a great job, so thank you for that. Yeah, I think, I'd like to thank all the ward workers. That's a tough job. That's a long day for the people that are there from 5:30 in the morning till 9:30 at night. And, you know, they don't do it for the pay. They do it because they love serving their city. And, yeah, this Saturday will be a recount. Now, I'll turn that over to Mr. Healy.
So, as voted on by the Alderman earlier tonight, the recount for Board of Ed will be this Saturday, starting at 9:00 AM in the auditorium. We are collecting names of individuals that would like to come and help out with the counting. We're going to need a lot of people with, you know, it's a pick five, four, and eight candidates, so it's going to take quite a bit of time. We have, looking at the numbers, 15,500 or so ballots to go through. So, if anyone is interested in helping, reach out to the city clerk's office, and we can get you on the list to help. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Aldman O'Brien.[1649.71]
Thank you, Madam President. It's been noted that the Infrastructure Committee was supposed to meet on November twenty-second, which is the night before Thanksgiving. We've got to cancel that. I'm sure everybody's got a pie to bake. So, we'll allow you to do so. So, we're going to move it to December eleventh or thirteenth, so if you can keep those dates tentatively open. We're going to really try to shoot for the eleventh. I think that is a better date, but we've got a lot of moving parts on this one. Besides our regular agenda, it's going to be a combined meeting with the police commissioners on the Riverside property. So, hopefully, we can get them to commit to December eleventh, and we shall go from there, and you'll be notified through the Aldermanic office. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. On next Monday, the twentieth, there will be a Penetech Water Special Committee. It's very important that the members do attend. We have some very time-sensitive stuff that needs to get passed there and then go on to the full board and then back to their Board of Directors meeting. It's the proxy card, et cetera. So, it's very important that we all make that meeting so that we do have that, and it will be right in front of the Human Affairs Committee. So, it's six-thirty, which is an unusual time for us, next Monday. Thank you.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman Lopez.
I mean, Alderman Klee just said it, but the Human Affairs Committee is also Monday after the Penetech Committee. We have a lot of grants. Somebody should come and learn about what we're doing, and the city's receiving these monies.
Alderman Dowd.
This Thursday, Joint Special School Building Committee at seven o'clock at Nashua High North.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion that the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, one nay.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at eight fifty-five P. M. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you and your families.